Are we ready? Sorry. Good evening. Calling this meeting to order at five o'clock. Is that Ellen? Okay. So I think I'm going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and. Alright, we are now going to have comments from the public. Our public says they are not going to comment. Not at the moment, okay? And so then I need a motion to adopt and approve the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
Okay. We go on to our action items, five point one. Approval of the provisional internship permit, PIP, request for Kara Kling to teach preschool inclusion for South County Consortium for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Jason.
So we, this is one of two provisional internship permits that we're bringing forward. And it is for preschool inclusion, a hard to fill position. And we're hoping that we can get this approved to bring this teacher in in time to teach the class.
Alright, any comments? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no opposition, the approval passes. And then the second approval, a provisional of the PIP request for Maria Maltonato to teach transitional kindergarten at Valley Vista Waldorf School for twenty-five, twenty-six, same thing.
Same thing.
Okay, alright, I need a motion.
I move to approve the PIP.
Any questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, on to the approval of the resolution two-five, two-six, zero-two, calling an election for approval of an education parcel tax establishing specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation with any other elections occurring on November fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Matthew.
So I think, oh, hi, Meredith, and is Ellen on Zoom as well? I just want to just give some, a little bit of backstory, Ryan and I were going back and forth over the weekend. Is this, yeah. And I think we're in a unique time, right, time period right now. And I want to give a little bit of background and then just kind of open it up. And I also have, since we've talked and discussed, some other concerns have come up. And so I'm honestly struggling a little bit right now with this as well. So let's talk it through and kind of see where everybody feels like we're at. So as I shared during the budget study session, is that when I started as superintendent, you know, twenty-twenty-one, speaking to the entire district staff at the football field at Pendle High School saying, this is great, this is great right now, the federal government's giving us millions of dollars over the next three, it turned out to be four years. The state came in and gave some additional money. We've received well over ten million dollars in the last four years of one-time funding from the federal government and state government. And the idea is with one-time funding is to not use it to pay for people, people who eat and breathe. We know that that's not best practice and we know that at the time, that's what our students needed. That's what our, that's what our district needed, that's what our community needed. We added more nurses, we added more mental health staff, we had added more reading specialists, we added more student, we added student advisors at all the elementary schools, we added more trusted adults on our campuses, student and family engagement coordinator, on and on and on, creating experiences and ways for our students to reconnect and build those, build those connections. We were in the middle of a mental health crisis that kind of continued to go on. We're seeing it lessen and lessen as time goes on and it's still a high concern for us. So this past year, not only, I feel like when I left one community, one country and came back to another, one community, came back to a different community, the, the funding gap, so not only did the federal government and state government say, sorry, no more one-time, one-time money to take care of the pandemic, the, the post-pandemic, post-pandemic needs of students, they actually were starting to try to claw back money from last year that was already budgeted, already spent. That money has been released, but we still haven't seen the money yet, so we'll, I'll believe it when we see it. And then as far as this current fiscal year and for, moving forward, it's beyond uncertain what, what we're going to be getting from the federal government and some of the the deferrals that the state is talking about. So, but the one-time money to deal with the impacts of the pandemic are, the valve has been shut off. And so that leaves us in a situation when going back to standing before the group at Pendle High School, I said, this is great times. We, I mean, it was terrible times, actually. We were all sitting in the football, at the football field outside with masks on because it was, it was a terrible, terrible time. But funding wise, we were getting funding to hire staff. And I remember saying, in three or four years from now, you're all going to hate me because, hate us because we're going to have to reduce positions to get back to where we were pre, pre one-time funding. And when we calculated out, Amanda, right, she brings her about the number fifteen percent. So our staffing has gone up approximately fifteen percent since pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. We have reduced some, but we have a lot still to go. The calculation at the budget study session was about five million dollars, which is why we were told if we don't cut a million dollars right now, you're going to be in a world of trouble. So we, we were able to, the board was able to, we did a million dollars in reductions, knowing that one million dollars right now is the equivalent of two million dollars for next year. So that leaves us with approximately three million dollars that we're going to have to reduce. So all that to say, we can spend the next few months, right, I'm, I'm just envisioning budget advisory committee and LCAP, bringing them together and having three, three, the next three or four months, basically talking about gloom and doom and all the reductions and things that we're going to have to make. Well, I should also say, and also in the meantime, we have moved from a six-period day to a seven-period day, needing to add approximately eighteen teachers. So our costs are going up and our funding is, we, they've taken away the one-time funding and there's uncertainty for the future. So all that to say, we can have this, these conversations about gloom and doom, we can talk about reducing here and trying to get as much savings as we possibly can. Or in the alternative, if we kind of flip it on its head, what Ryan and I discussed was we could put this out to the community. We know that about a year and a half ago, I can't remember now, about a year and a half ago, a couple of years ago, we went out for a parcel tax, elementary parcel tax and secondary parcel tax. We know that we're two school districts technically. We function essentially, we function as one, Pendle City Schools. When we think about reserves, our reserves are the elementary and secondary together. The elementary passed and, and the secondary one had a large majority of voters who voted to say, yes, we want to tax ourselves because we support public education. Sixty-four percent, approximately sixty-four percent of voters said, yes, we want to, we want to tax ourselves because we care about public education. We missed it by two, two-point-six percent, two-point-seven percent, whatever it was. So the idea is now with the political landscape, landscape sort of shifting, knowing that the one-time funding is gone, we could say, we could go out to the public, to our, our community and say, instead of talking about, and it's not to say that we, we're not going to have to make any reductions because we probably, we probably still will. But the, the pain points in our schools and the adults, the trusted adults in our schools, I think would, would be, well, I know, would be much lessened if we started to receive some, some funding, some parcel tax funding from, from our community. And so the conversation kind of stemmed from that. And I think that the timing of this is very interesting because on one hand, it's really, it's really great timing because if we were able to pass a parcel tax, let's say it's, you know, what we had put on there was one-twenty-nine, that would bring in about three million dollars. November is a great time because it's, it's actually very, very quick. And we would know as far as the positions that we'd be reducing, we could say, hey, if this passes on in November, it's going to be, look very, very different, what we're going to have to reduce and what we're not going to have to reduce. And we could message that to our community. On the other hand, it's a very strange time to be doing this because it's certainly something that was not even on my radar about doing until we just taught, like literally till this weekend. Because there are some challenges, there are some real challenges with doing this and I want to make sure that we're all clear about that. And that's why I said, even in the last few hours, I've learned some things that make me concerned. So the, the concern is, and I don't want to, I don't want to play roulette with, like, we have to be very careful with, you know, every single dollar in our district, in district funds. So going out for a, and this is where Meredith, at some point, I'll have you jump in, so Meredith's our attorney who specializes in this, so I want to hear her opinion as well. But my understanding is that if, so right now, we're not a hundred percent sure that the governor is going to be calling a special election, right? He said he's going to, the legislature, it's, you know, everything that's happening in Texas and in DC and I, I don't know for sure, but it sounds like he's very, very much planning to do it. Ryan, you do more, you know more about this too. But let's say we pass this tonight. We would have until August thirteenth to pull it back. If we go, we go to, you know, the registered voters say, hey, we're actually going to pull this, we're not going to, we're not going to run it. If we try to run this on our, on our own, the voter turnout, it's going to be a totally different show, right? If, if the governor doesn't run this special election, if he runs a special election, you're going, we're going to, he had people coming out of the woodwork to vote for, on this kind of thing. Short of that, it's going to be a very low turnout of, of an election, not to say that we couldn't pass it. But our costs go from, and this is where Amanda, you have to help me, I know, I know the approximate numbers. If, if we do this and we piggytail on with the governor's special election, it would cost our district about a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So the range, and this is for Sonoma County only, we do not have the Marin because we do have a hundred and ninety-eight parcels in Marin. So we do not have those costs at this time. But it would be roughly the Sonoma County election costs would be from a hundred and sixty-six to four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, depending on how many people have things on the ballot. That does not include any additional fees for legal and consultants and vendors and things like.
So is it safe to say that one-sixty-six is if, is, if we were to be on the ballot with the, the governor and state? With their resolution or four-forty-four is if we're just by ourselves?
Yeah, but it's a whole range from like three dollars to eight dollars per registered voter. So it depends on if it was just us and the state election. I don't know that that would bring the cost down to one-sixty-six, it could be somewhere in between. The, we paid just under one-sixty, about a hundred and fifty is what we paid for the parcel tax measure twenty-twenty-four?
Yeah.
Four, yes.
Was, there wasn't, was there anything else on the, on that ballot?
Mm-hmm, that was the March primary.
Oh, okay.
Which is why it was, that's about what we, we'd be looking at just a little bit more than that if, if we were on with someone else. And now here's the, here's the real kicker is that we have until August thirteenth to pull it. The legislature is off right now until August eighteenth. And the governor has until August twenty-second to decide whether this is going to go on the ballot or not. And that's where Ryan and Meredith, I'd just love to hear discussion because it's just, there's, there's much more uncertainty than I had originally kind of been anticipating. So just want to hear the discussion and then before we even think about, you know, moving this kind of thing forward, so, yeah. About what? Sure, yeah, 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 great idea.
Um, we did reach out to the county today and there is potential for uniform district elections. There are seven special districts that could go to the ballot on November fourth. The candidate nomination period closes this Friday at five. But if any of the special district offices where the incumbent hasn't filed by the deadline, that will extend until Wednesday, August thirteenth at five PM, so this, the same day that we would have to let them know.
Meredith, do you want to, is this a good time for you to kind of just add and clarify and make sure that we're all, we have all the information?
Me too, it's very nice to see you Superintendent Harris, welcome back. Yeah, your dates are correct, it's, it's, as you say, it's kind of fuzzy, we don't really know what's going to happen. This statewide election is supposedly going to be triggered by whatever happens in Texas. As you said, clearly you're in a much better position if the statewide election happens because then you have those energized Democrats who tend to vote yes on parcel taxes also, we're going to come out to the ballot anyway. And even if, you know, depending on how much time and money there is for any kind of information campaign for you to actually educate the folks in the community that this, the parcel tax is on the ballot. If there, if that effort isn't too large, those voters will be there anyway if there's a statewide election. It's a very different picture if there's not a statewide election because that means that the efforts that are necessary on our part are much greater. And as you know, because I'm very familiar with campaigns, it's been done many in the last eighteen months, I guess. The district can provide information, you can tell the voters what's on the ballot and why it's on the ballot and how it will be used. You can't try and sway their votes. But in a parcel tax election, information is really important. So getting out to the community and letting them know that this measures on the ballot is important and as Amanda mentioned, it's going to cost some money. So in addition to those election costs, there might be some expenses that you bear that help let folks know that this measure is, is on the ballot and the opportunity to, to vote on it is happening on November fourth. And also, as you mentioned, the timing is not great, you have until November thirteenth to pull the measure, the governor and the legislature have. Yeah. And I think, I think even I read today that it goes, if they, if the legislature doesn't create their special legislation by November twenty-second, there is another method they have of going forward that takes a little bit even longer. None of that matters because November twenty-second is past, or, sorry, August twenty-second is past, or August thirteenth withdrawal deadline.
Right.
I think those are the considerations you're only in front of.
And the other thing, Meredith, and correct me if I'm wrong, so that, because this is, this is something else I've been hearing is that if, if we were to put this, send this to the registrar of voters before Fri, the Friday, this Friday deadline, right? Because this, this Friday is the deadline for us to submit.
Right.
We, if we have it in by Friday, we will go with, on November fourth or some, I know that there's also some language in the bill around nothing else can be put on the bill except this one item. So, but Charles seemed to think that, no, 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 if you have it in by Friday on the deadline, it will go with, it will go on, on November fourth.
Yeah, no, you're right. And, and I believe in the recall election a few years back, there was some language like that as well that said that that could be the only thing on the ballot. I don't think, I think you're right that I don't think the registrar is going to pull your measure. And, or alternatively, they would separate the elections, you know, we call it one election, like it's one date and everybody votes on the same date. But every item on the ballot is a separate election. So the registrar also has the ability to call separate elections on the same date. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a risk that if you filed it, the registrar wouldn't put it in front of the voters.
Got it.
What about the cost if she does two separate elections? Would that impact our costs? Would we be basically funding our own measure?
There was a whole list.
Yeah.
As Amanda referenced, there's a whole list that the registrar provided to us of what goes into determining the cost. It had things like how many pages, if anyone files an argument in favor, how many pages the argument favors. So there's, there's, it's a really long detailed list of what the costs are. But I think, yes, if they separate the elections, that probably increases the cost.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright, so cost estimates that are impacted by various factors, many of which are not impacted by turnout. So these would be just costs, what other jurisdictions might be going to election, number of pages for analysis, total number of printed pages, whether there are arguments and rebuttals, how much time to type set, proof, translate. So we actually pay for their, their time also. Costs for mailing, voter notification cards, costs for ballot type setting, proofing, printing, mailing, envelope, paper, postage, how many poll workers are needed, what rent available, what rent centers might charge for the voting centers, faxed ballots, legal notices required, number of ballots that are returned as undeliverable, we would have to pay for. Costs that are impacted by turnout, the number of people who return ballots by mail because we pay, we would be paying return postage, how many replacement ballots are needed, number of extra help needed to process returned vote by mail ballots, how many vote center supplies are used from ballot paper to ballot toner and all of that. So it, we did not receive the final bill for the past elections, it was months, like six months later, so.
But the total cost for the, the previous election was?
So for the, the secondary was I'm going to, I'm going to mute and I'm going to pull, I act, I'm going to pull it up.
Okay. If I may jump in for one second, there was one correction based on my knowledge, the way that the governors and the state leaders are proposing their ballot measure is not, they are going to, as of this afternoon, they are moving forward with a November fourth special election. Newsom had a press conference on Monday reiterating the same. But the, the ballot measure itself will have language saying that the law or the new maps will only go into effect if Texas or whatever, there'll be a trigger. The election itself will not be triggered by Texas. They will be moving forward with the election, but the law slash maps will be triggered by whatever Texas does or other states, I think they're still describing that. So as of this moment, you know, and things are changing quickly, that is how it would be set up. And I have heard the same, it's something by the, the governor and legislature will, will make a decision by the end of August. It's on the same timeline as the recall, which was about sixty-seven days prior to the election, which is, you know, the end of the month. So that's my understanding.
Yeah. I would just say if the way I was originally envisioning this, when we put it on to, to come and have a conversation today, to do a special election, if if this was for sure, that the governor was putting, was putting this on and it would be shared costs and we'd have a big turnout, my, my, what I would say to you all is this was not on my radar, I was, I personally don't really want to do this. But I think it's, it's right and it's the, it's the right thing to do for our students and for our community. Because in, instead of, there's so much, there's so much anxiety, there's so much finger pointing, there's so much, people are so upset right now with so many things. It feels to me like a very productive outlet and a productive thing to do that would actually keep more of our trusted adults on our campuses. And so it's not something that I'm like, yeah, parcel tax, let's do this, I'm so excited. But I think it's the right thing for students and this is, this is the time and this is the place and this is the right, the right group of people who can make that decision and make it happen. And so I would say, yes, I think we should do it. With all the uncertainty that I was starting to think about, I'm going, I, I don't know if it's the right thing to do. And so that's where I, some, kind of some self-doubt came in and said, I, you know, if we, if we move forward with this and on the thirteenth, we still don't have real clarity, then maybe there's something that we, would, you guys say, hey, if it's, if we don't know for sure that the election is happening, then Matthew, just pull, let's pull this. But, so, I don't know, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking right now.
So would your recommendation be possibly to, after discussion, take a vote on the resolution? And if it passes with the caveat that if we don't know for sure about the November fourth election, special election for the state, that we rescind it August thirteenth? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
That, that's what I'm thinking and I'm just not sure if we'll know by then, I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I don't know, we're going to know by then, so.
Okay. So I need comments, yeah?
I was going to say, this is a news article that came out last night. It quotes, "The California Secretary of State's office confirmed Tuesday that in order for there to be redistricting special election on the November fourth ballot, state lawmakers need to declare it by August twenty-second." So though Newsom has declared it, I think we still won't know. We will not know by August thirteenth because the, they, they have to declare it and they are on recess until the eighteenth. So unless they came back early, what we may know on the thirteenth is that other just special election districts within the county are moving forward.
To add one more complicating factor, this is not your last opportunity. I'm not sure if the timeline has been shared with you, but the county sets tax rates every August. So if the measure were put on the November ballot and it passed, the parcel tax would be added to the twenty-six, twenty-seven tax rule. So next August, the county would add the taxes and collect them by December. So you could put a parcel tax measure on the ballot in June of twenty-twenty-six and still meet that deadline.
Can you repeat that?
Yes. So because of the timing of the way the tax role works and the way property tax bills are sent out to property tax owners, a parcel tax that passes in November of twenty-twenty-five doesn't actually hit the property tax bill until fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right.
In August of twenty-twenty-six, the county would add an amount for your parcel tax to tax bills that are mailed to tax, property tax owners that are due in December of twenty-twenty-six and April of twenty-twenty-seven. Which means that you have time between now and August of twenty-twenty-six to call a parcel tax election on a different date. This is not your last opportunity.
So even if we somehow won the election in November, we couldn't even get the money until the same time that we would get the, as the June election, is that right?
Correct.
Correct.
Do you guys have questions, Caitlin?
And this is where I think the political strategist, Ryan and Caitlin, wanted to.
Yeah.
Without being too political.
I mean, I think June makes a lot more sense in a lot of ways, but like I get wanting to capitalize on all of the attention that people are finally paying to politics and the government and realizing how much the federal government can make or break public schools. So I'm really torn. I think monetarily, people are struggling right now, but also are realizing the importance of investing in their local. So like, I really could go either way on this. I just, like, usually we do a lot more polling and stuff before, so like, I feel like last time we talked about it, we were talking about keeping it under a hundred and this has one-twenty-nine per parcel. But I don't know what the polling, like, I don't think people are feeling financially better off than they did the last time we did the polling, if I had to guess, but that's just a guess. So I'm really. So I'm real, I really am all over the place on this. I mean, as a homeowner, I would gladly pay an extra hundred and twenty nine dollars a year to keep my local schools afloat. But I don't, I obviously care a lot about local schools, which is why I do this for four hundred dollars a year.
Yeah. And I think, you know, part of that was looking at, we looked at some of our comparils. Amanda, correct them wrong. I think Nevada, we, we had an information from Nevada and San Rafael. I'm sure we could pull lots of different surrounding districts, but you want to give us the information you had about the, some of the surrounding districts, their parcel tax? Oh, is that not you? That wasn't you. I think, I think that, I think it was San Rafael High School, just the high school district. I think they're at one eighty nine and I think that Nevada is at two fifty, two fifty one or two fifty two a, a year.
Oh, no, I think we need all the, like, I don't think we don't need that amount, but I don't know that voters.
I, I agree. I totally agree.
So I do have, in thinking about the timeline, knowing if we pass something this November for this next budget cycle and, and planning out as we have large, you know, potential cuts coming forward, knowing that we would have like this additional revenue coming in. Yeah, let's call, I guess, year two of our three year plan. We would would not need to make as drastic cuts year one, correct?
That's correct.
So we do have this because not knowing whether this passes in June, we will have to make those cuts. So we are doing, we talked about if we do something now about saving jobs and saving trusted adults in the classroom and doing what's right for our kids and our students and our community versus if we go in June, we have already, you know, at this point, we won't, those results don't get finalized until the end of June, the early July. Like the decisions haven't made, those positions have been cut. And so that is the decision that's weighing on me. And doing everything we can to do what's right for our students and do something that's like better and what everything that this board has done, you know, during COVID and post COVID, to have these folks on campus, they institute the new bell schedule, to have, to fulfill, you know, the promises and the goals of the board. We have a unique opportunity and that's how I see it. And I know it's tough because there's a lot of uncertainty and this stuff came together in the last two weeks, ten days. So that's, that's how I see it. And like, it's just, is this opportunity presented to ourselves to do the right thing?
Joanna, I know you've had some reservations.
Many reservations about this. So for me, it hasn't been ten days. It's been like twenty four hours. Like this feels so rushed and there's so many uncertainties about this. We also, this is like, we're talking about a hundred to seventy thousand to half a million dollar gamble. Like we don't know who's gonna turn out. We don't know how people are gonna vote. People's financial situation is so precarious right now. I just feel like this is so fast. Like we had, I thought we talked about parcel tax a couple of months ago, like Caitlin was saying, it's like, no, no, no. And now all of a sudden it's like, okay, we're doing this. Like it just feels like we're, we're just being tossed by the wind, you know? Newsom says a lot of things. He also says some fun education he has not. I also don't know if this is the only thing that we can do. I'm like, look at Damon Connolly and Chris Rogers. They got forty five million dollars for Stenoma State. What'd they give us? Zero. Like, so I'm just wondering if this really is the only thing that we can do. This also like, we can put this on the ballot, but that's all we can actually do. We can't make people vote for this. So and then we're out half a million dollars and then our cuts will be deeper. So that's where I'm sitting right now. I don't know if this is the right path for us to go down. And it's so uncertain. It'd be different if like Newsom already called the election.
Yeah.
Great, of course, but he hasn't. And they're not even gonna be back in the office until like two more weeks. So I, that's why I'm just like, what is going on right now? Like I feel so confused about a lot of things. And but the timeline, the uncertainty, it's just, it's a lot to try to make a decision in a day. So I definitely would not want to see anything go forward without the August thirteenth, able to pull back from it as well. So that's how I'm feeling right now.
Understood. It's a, I don't, I mean, I, I share all of these, you know, I'm, I'm a I, I, you know, the, the problem with the eighty nine dollars or the ninety eight dollars is that it doesn't, it doesn't do much. And, and you know, listening to you, Joanna, I'm thinking that when we cut the million dollars a month ago, it was in order to make the pain a little bit less. So we were looking forward to not having to cut as much. I just, I would just like to do something positive so that we're not, you know, always will of the whis at the, you know, at the will of, you know, the government, both state and, you know, people like Newsom, people that like the president who, you know, are doing these things and not considering the, the real impacts of this.
But we also have to look at the fact that the first one did not pass. And we don't know why. Like, did they do any after polling? Like what made the difference or what could make the difference to, to get to that two thirds vote? We have no idea. At least I don't think so. I don't know if they did any after polling.
Did we do anything, Amanda?
Yeah, there was a presentation about.
What'd they say?
After.
I will look that up right now. I'm trying to get some of the answers to questions you guys.
I remember they talked about, yeah, there was demographics and there was also about doors that we, that where we knocked, doors that we knocked on had a much higher turnout. And we didn't, we didn't knock on as many doors as we should have. I can't remember the whole presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think again, let's be cognizant of, you know, I think talking about campaign and I, I, I wonder, I don't want to cross any
Yeah.
lines.
But there was already a presentation. So it sounds like I do not remember it. Maybe I wasn't here.
It was an after presentation.
But I, I don't remember. So if someone could remind, I can look it up on my own. I, I don't remember them saying why we didn't get those two and a half percent votes.
Yeah, we had one, we had one, like through day of the door knocking and the weather was bad. And I think people tried to go out on the another day or two, but it was, it had to do with the amount of people that we had campaigning. I did also want to point out on, there is going to be a April special election in April. We do know that SMART is planning on having the June twenty sixth election. I've been in contact with them. They are putting a special tax on the ballot in June. So though we wouldn't have the results until the beginning of the fiscal year, then the results until July, there is that election. San Rafael's parcel tax that passed last year for the second, for the high school was two hundred and fifty three dollars. The elementary is is three hundred and fifty two dollars. Nevada passed for two hundred and fifty one and to speak for the eighty nine dollars last time, that is the highest amount we polled. We didn't pull anything higher. So it, it wasn't. And what we did find at the time, we polled eighty nine, like seventy two and like sixty, like three different numbers and they all polled pretty relatively the same that. Yeah.
Hey.
So it does, I agree. It does feel very rushed. I mean,
Yeah.
This is not something that we've been planning. It's not something we've even been thinking about until really came up with, really came up with the, you know, what's going on with the governor and potential to call an election. And then we started to have some conversations and but yeah.
Yeah.
And there, there is a benefit to being the only tax on the ballot.
For sure.
Like,
Yeah.
Even if it makes, like, if we're also, especially if SMART comes literally first on the ballot before us, people are like, oh, I just voted for a tax. Like, I'm not gonna tax myself twice.
That is a very common thing as lower you get on the ballot, the more no votes you get. So that is the other piece where we have, I think, again, it's very, very short runway, but it is this kind of standard, you know, time to talk to voters in the community post Labor Day that's still in front of us. And, you know, having more conversations with the community about the importance of this. And again, it is the different framework of like saving, saving positions versus kind of restoring. That is, to me, is like this, this is, this is a opportunity.
That's the argument.
And why, if we're gonna pay the whole half a million, then why would we just do it?
But we don't know that.
No, I just. But we, but if we keep it on after August thirteenth, then we are, if he doesn't call for an election. Like we talked about this and we were like, I, I don't.
It changed because of the environment at the state capital and the feds. I think I was definitely adamantly opposed to having a parcel tax. And I remember vividly, absolutely not that we're not ready. But then when I heard the arguments about that this, this would be an election that's very different from just a, you know, primary election in March. And that things have really changed since March of twenty fourth. You know, our country is, and the financial situation in our state has really changed. And that's why we have five million dollars that we have to cut. And so I kind of feel like whether or not the state does it, I'd like the community to back our schools. That this is the time that they need to do it because we need, we need their support now. That they'd be saying yes to all these different things. They'd be saying yes to our students. They'd be saying yes to the excellence of our teachers. They'd be in our staff. I just, I kind of feel like I started to kind of change that I'm, I'm tired of, this is locally controlled. We will have the control of it. Our local administrators and our board know that state can't touch it. The feds can't touch it and they can't tell us what to do with it. It's only if it passes, but then at some point, even in June, we're gonna have to make the convincing argument that the community needs to do this. They need to step up and they need to protect our schools. And it's really a protection of our schools at this point. They have stated openly at the federal government that they want to get rid of public education and they have definitely tried.
I agree with you on everything you're saying.
I know.
I'm not arguing with you either. Can't control what people are going to do in the voting booth. We don't know. And we just discussed this. I think that's also why I'm just like, what is going on? And we're not doing it because solely because we're trying to take control. We're doing it because we think Newsom's gonna do something. So that is being reactive. Like if we were going to be proactive, I think we would have done something differently without such a tight timeline to do the proper polling, to figure out if people really are willing to back education. People say that, but then look what happened a year ago. They did not back education. I think we had good messaging then. So that's why I'm just like, want to take at least a pause to have forty eight hours to think about it. You know, and then I feel like I'm in a bad position because if I vote no or have any type of opposition, it's like, well, Joanna Pond doesn't support public education. And that's not fair either to do something so mad that we have it. We don't have all the information. I mean, we see an increase in people who are socioeconomically disadvantaged in our county, in our city, in our own district. We have more homeless students. We have more people leaving the area because they can't afford it. I know a hundred and twenty nine dollars might not sound like a lot, but as someone who grew up very poor and disadvantaged, that is a lot of money to people. Even if you have a home, you don't know, fourteen people just got laid off in the Department of Ed. I mean, there, there's, the economic outlook is so bad. We don't know if people are gonna be like, yes, I'm willing to pay more. Yeah, I, I, that's, that's just where I am right now. I don't disagree with you that the state and the feds have completely screwed us. It'd be nice to do something to take control. I just don't know if I'm willing to risk half a million dollars. Cause then that means we're cutting that much more. That, and that's, yeah.
I don't disagree with you.
So on top of the costs to file and all of that, what are the other costs for the district, like paying the campaign? I mean, obviously like the actual campaign would need to fundraise on its own. I'm not talking about that, but like, what are other costs to the district? Cause like this can add up very quickly and like Joanna's saying.
Can you give us a breakdown, Amanda?
So I'm looking at the contract that we had for the twenty four parcel tax. The surveys, we surveyed five hundred PCS voters and it was about thirty five thousand dollars for surveying. We sent out mailers and it is about twelve thousand dollars per mailing for, that was for the, for both this. So we did two. So we spent about twenty five thousand dollars on mailings. And then also we did pay a fee to the consultants that did that work on behalf of the district. So the work that they did to get all of the information, the education piece, and then there's also the committee outside does their own contract too, but that contract was for twenty thousand dollars. So the last, and that, that was for both districts though. So I said, I guess we could cut that in half. So twenty five, thirty five, seven, so about thirty five thousand plus the, so the election best case scenario would be about two hundred thousand dollars if the district chose to do surveying, but that surveying was really to determine the cost. I would say let's, let's not do that piece of it.
Yeah. And we have a recent survey, which was the election results, which does go to show like we are, it's right there. You know, if it is a turnout, you know, well turned out election based on, you know, Newsom and there would be hundreds of millions of dollars spent at a low level on this. It would be, you know, I think folks will be engaged and they would know when an election is around. So I would say that, and this is a question for Meredith. Does the board have to pass a second resolution to pull it off the ballot or can we designate the superintendent to do it? And so if we do need to pass a second resolution, I guess that would mean we would have to schedule a meeting for the twelfth.
Yeah, that's a really good question. You, you do have to pass a, another resolution. It's part of the requirement for withdrawing. Is that you present a resolution of the board showing that you asked for withdrawal. So yes.
Okay. So then my thought would be, I am in support of passing the resolution this evening and then scheduling a meeting for the twelfth. Reaching out to, we just so happen to have the, our state senator is the pro tem and he has a good pulse on what's going on and we can give him a call and see how likely this election is. And so then each board member has the likelihood of, you know, it overlapping with the state special election to make a decision on the twelfth for like the final call on whether we move forward or not.
What do you think, I think? Uh, he was just, Ryan was just stating how, how he would like to calendar things. Yeah. And then make sure that we have schedule a meeting for August twelfth. Well.
So that would be Tuesday, Tuesday, the twelfth.
Tuesday. So I believe are we? Um, so, um, I believe, are we done with discussion of the resolution?
I'm still thinking.
Okay, I, you want me to read it?
No.
Give you time?
Actually, so Matthew, this is, again, as, um, closely or. Nearly a, a copy, except for the amount, um, of the prior of resolution that was passed that put the, um. Parcel tax on the, um, twenty-twenty-four ballot.
Correct, it was written by Meredith and.
Yeah, any other, uh, edits besides, uh, the amount that you would like to flag for us?
Clickable dates for turning things in, really the only other ends. The content, the rationale for calling the elections, and the use of the funds is all the same.
We did update student enrollment by two hundred.
It's very, very similar.
Okay. And I know we talked about this offline and I know you can't speak for our labor partners, but they expressed. Support and are theoretically on board.
Yeah, I, I can't really speak for people, but, um, I'll say during my conversation with, um, with the president of CSEA. The concern was that we mentioned classified staff in the, in the literature and the things that go out. Uh, with PFT, it was, um, my conversation with Sandra was that, that. PFT would be very supportive of something like this, knowing what the impact would do for, um, for our certificated staff.
I think this time it's way more important to focus on our labor partners and their abilities and what they say and not listen to the consultant so much. Personally. That's my big thought.
Of the consultants online.
I don't know, I thought of the consultants.
Because also, I agree with you, because I know there are a couple of times that we were at odds, like, they didn't want us to translate things, it's like, it's pedaluma, we translate everything. So it's just things like that, um, again, I don't know how much of a difference that made, but yeah, I agree, it's like. The educators here know the community, so.
Yeah.
I think their commitment is essential. You know, and, and, um, the little bit that I know it sounds like they, they really want to move forward and be. That before, uh, they didn't feel like they had the materials and, you know, there was just a lot of, it was cold. And, um, and we had a very short timeline for that one, you know, that was even shorter. And, um, I mean, it was middle of March and we really had the kickoff in February, I think, wasn't it? So about the same, yeah, very short and, uh. And time, as I mentioned, times are different.
I do have the presentation in front of me of the results, if it would help. To, of the last election. Yeah, so we felt it was seven hundred and ninety-eight votes was, and, um. There was a, um, ten percent less voters showed up than we anticipated. The over sixty-five voters were fifteen percent higher and we really went after the younger.
Voters who didn't.
Yeah, sorry, I was thinking going after that, that was a wrong way to say it, so the demographics were the families and they, um. They came less than we anticipated and then over sixty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could use that data, um, and also, it's just the one. We won't have both an elementary tax and a high school tax.
So Amanda, could you send that around? I think by email would be, um, fine, I don't think we need to review it on the big screen or anything right now.
Hey, did, did Ellen, was Ellen ever able to get on? Dave?
Tried to use the Zoom link and Bree's email, but it didn't work.
Well, and also those homeowners, sixty-five and the low-income residents with disabilities will be, can be exempt if they choose to.
So I.
Is that written in there, Amanda? Exactly, yeah, thank you, so I'll double check.
So I think, um. Yeah, I, I, in a moment, I'm, I'm gonna make the resul, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, as written, um. The place is on the ballot, um, and we have some homework, um, to ensure that, uh. Someone from the Pro Tem's office can provide an update to the board. On the likelihood of the, um, state legislature calling a special election along with the governor, um, and then. You know, um, if the, our labor partners want to check in with the board members on, uh, their thoughts and then. We can, um, you know, I think have a, you know, a gut check come Tuesday on whether we move forward or not. But because of this deadline, um, I, I, at this moment, I think we have to move forward.
So are you, is your, um, motion to move forward as a, with the resolution as. Written in addition to having a, uh, another special meeting on the twelfth, on August twelfth?
Um, I think that's, I, I think we, I think that's just an agreement that superintendent to call that, um, uh, and the president.
Not part of your motion.
No, but like, I haven't made, like, okay, so I, I will move to, uh, approve the resolution to place a parcel tax on, um. The November special election.
Any second.
I'll second, I'm scared.
I know, I know, I would have seconded, so. All right, any more discussion before we vote? You're not ready to vote on this?
I think that's a valid reason to abstain.
It's a valid reason to abstain.
Yeah, if you don't feel ready, that's a perfectly valid reason to abstain.
It's fine. All right, we are ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All those abstaining? Um, the motion passes.
We will schedule, we'll schedule a, a special ordination for Tuesday, the twelfth. And get some more information before we make a final decision and we have until the thirteenth to pull it, so, okay?
Make sure Bree has time on her calendar on the thirteenth to physically go to the registrar and like. Yeah.
Yep, first day of school.
Whoever, yeah, first day of school, yeah, great timing.
So the thirteenth is when it has to go to the county.
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth is the last day to tell the county, never mind, never mind.
Yes.
All right.
Friday is the last day to get it to them, this Friday. The last day to pull it is the thirteen.
Okay, got it.
Meredith, you came off mute, did you?
So the meeting on the thirteenth needs to be in the morning.
It's on the twelfth.
Okay, sorry, there you go.
Yeah, good call though, yeah.
Um, and just to triple check, um. Does placing or calling for a special election require a simple majority vote or a supermajority vote?
It, it's a, it's a resolution to approve a spe- special tax which requires a majority.
Thank you.
Say, say that again?
So, when you call a special, um, an election to place a special tax on a ballot. You just need a majority of the members of the board approving the resolution, not need a supermajority.
All right. Thank you all. I will see you next week, all right, thank you, meeting adjourned.